All right, I'd like to call the March meeting of Lafayette City Council to order. If everyone would please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Under God, indivisible, and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Heidi?
Here.
Clinker?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Oliver Myers? Williamson?
Here.
Downey?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Thank you. The minutes of February 3, 2014, meeting, Mr. Campbell.
I move they be approved as communicated.
Mr. Heidi?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from last month's meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to make to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The minutes are approved. Presentation and disposal of claims?
There are none.
Presentation of petitions and communications?
There are none.
Reports of city offices with the city clerk?
Clerk's office, monthly January. Fleet maintenance, monthly January. Waterworks, monthly January. Police Department, monthly January. Water Police and Control Department, monthly January. And the 2013, and a report. And Lafayette Redevelopment Commission, 2013, and a report.
Thank you. And as a reminder to folks in the audiences, those reports are on file with the city clerk's office and available for your review during regular business hours. Moving forward to ordinances for second reading, we have none, so we will start with ordinances for first reading. The first one is ordinance 2014-05.
An ordinance amending the Lafayette Municipal Code pertaining to the sewer service and wastewater control in the City of Lafayette by amending repealing chapters 6.01, 6.03, and 6.04.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to counsel Mr. Downey.
I move to hear and approve ordinance 2014-05.
Mr. Brown?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 2014-05. Mr. Tally?
Good evening. Brad Tally, Water Police Control Superintendent. The revision to this ordinance is our five-year permit cycle requires us to evaluate our sewer use ordinance and adopt any new language that may have come up in those five years. The majority of what you see here are truly just definition changes, adding EPA language so that we have the same language as they do. I'd be more than happy to go through each one. I'm not sure how you'd like to go through it.
Unless there's a specific question by any councilman, I think that the general description is fine. It's just really to update our ordinance and make new revisions or revise definitions to go in sync with the EPA.
Follows EPA language.
Yeah. And as I understand, this will have to be tabled?
Right. This is the ordinance that we need to get first approval from the council, and then it goes from there to EPA for their final approval before it comes back for second reading. Years past, it's taken quite a long time. I think the first time it was several years. The last time it was maybe 18 months, so they are getting quicker, but...
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
I move that this ordinance be tabled. Do you want to?
No, wait, we have to prove it first, the first reading.
Ask it for free?
Yeah. Little ahead of us. Okay. Any other specific questions of councilmen of Mr. Tally? Is there any specific things you want to focus on or bring to our attention?
Now, there was one typo that we corrected. There was a limit of total solids. It was 250. We've taken that limit out. That was a typo from years past. We have a limit of 250 on total suspended solids, which is a completely different parameter. That's basically the only actual change as far as what the industries will see, other than just the language changes.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any comments from the members of the audience on this particular ordinance before we take a final vote? Any other comments or questions by councilmen? Then we will have a roll call vote on the ordinance.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Ordinance passes at seven to zero.
Thank you. The ordinance is passed. The next ordinance, 2014... Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Campbell, yeah. Didn't mean to ignore you there.
When do you want this to come up again? Is there a time certain or just leave it out there in netherland?
Okay, very good.
Move that this ordinance be tabled until it is tabled again.
Uncertain. Mr. Clinker?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table it then for time uncertain. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now to ordinance 2014-06.
An ordinance amending zoning ordinance to Pecanou County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from HB to GB east side of Progress Drive west of I-65, Mike and Mike, petitioners.
It's a pleasure to counsel Mr. Williamson.
I move for passage of ordinance 2014-06 on first and final reading.
Mr. Campbell?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to consider ordinance 2014-06. Is the petitioner here?
Kevin Riley with Riley and Peter in Shire. You have a small packet of information if I could pass that out quickly.
Yes.
Yes. Our firm represents the petitioners. They are requesting a rezone of five acre tract of land along the east side of Progress Drive from HB highway business to general business. As you'll see on the first two pages of your packet, that land is highlighted in yellow. On the first page is the crosshatched lot shown there. This site's bordered to the north by property zone HB containing restaurants and hotels. It's bordered to the south by property zone GB, including the Walmart and other retail and commercial businesses. All sites are... Excuse me. All utilities are available to this site. The petitioner intends to build a 36,000 square foot Harley-Davidson store at this location. On the third page of your packet, you'll see a photograph generally depicting what the exterior of this building would look like. We anticipate that this is a $3 million project that they will undertake. This is a family-owned business. They own several Harley-Davidson dealerships throughout the Midwest. They intend to employ 22 full-time and eight part-time employees at this site. It's our opinion that general business is a more appropriate zone for this site than highway business for a couple of reasons. First of all, because of the proximity to the local road, meaning Progress Drive, as opposed to I-65. And second of all, because the ordinance, and in our opinion state law, require a GB zoning for a motorcycle dealership to be operated at this site. It's my understanding there were some questions about noise that were raised at the caucus meeting last week. We don't believe that noise is going to be an issue at this location, mainly because it doesn't bring any kind of new noise that isn't already there with 65 and 26 close by. Also, there are no single-family homes, apartments nearby, and we anticipate that this business is going to have standard operating hours, not late night or 24-hour... It's not a late night or 24-hour business. We've not received any objections from neighboring property owners. The owner of the hotel to the north, Roy Meeks, has approved this petition or is in support of it. APC staff recommended approval of this request, and the Area Plan Commission unanimously approved this request at its meeting last month. We ask that you approve this rezone, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of councilmen?
Is there a stoplight on 26 where this would... this progress road exits?
I don't know. I do not know if there is a stoplight there. I believe there is. Is that the new...
My understanding is...
Yes, there is.
My understanding at the staff meeting, that comes in off of that light that comes into the... comes into the gas station.
There's a gas station and a motor stick and things like that. There is a stoplight.
And goes back. And again, at the meeting, we did approve at 12 to 0, and again, staff recommendation of approval. Isn't that light somewhat of a problem? Isn't there three lanes that go out of the...
I'm not aware.
Right, yes.
I think that's right. I'm not aware of it being a problem, but I think that's correct.
I think that's a question that should be answered, because I think you have to stop back somewhat from the light, because it can block traffic somehow. Is that right? It's in your area, Bob. Is it...
Yeah, I'd like if you came out of Meeks' place and the old Speedway and all that. If you came out, you had to sit there, and then behind the other gas station, the road comes down, and you have to kind of sit there, let this go, then you eventually get to turn out. But there is a stoplight there. It's the next one up by IHOP that has no stoplight. That's a bad one.
Are those stoplights controlled by the state since it's a state highway?
Us.
Oh, no, that's us now.
I just have a question too. I know, I think in the old Harley-Davidson site, sometimes motorcyclists would gather there for a ride, a charity ride, or something like that, and then they'd go off and do the ride. Would that be occurring here, and is there any concern that a bunch of them getting together, making noise, that would concern the hotel guests or anything like that?
I don't know that that's anything in the plans for this site, but if it is, I don't think it's going to be a problem. Again, it doesn't bring any more noise or any different noise than what's already at that location with the interstate and 26 right there, so we don't believe that would be any problem. Also, the hotel owner has not voiced any concern about this, and in fact supports the petition.
Most of those rides start out around 9 o'clock to 10 o'clock. They have a sign-up, and then it's... So usually, it's a little later in the morning. It's not like early morning.
Many of the motorcycle riders that I've seen seem to like to make additional noise with their motorcycles.
It's only when I move at your house.
All right. Any other questions?
I was just going to ask, Bob, if they had any pipes yet loud enough to reach the hospital while people are trying to recover.
There's another exit there, isn't there, on... behind Walmart? Comes down and... This is Walmart here in that white building, correct? Right there.
That's correct.
And there's a... I think that's a light right there, isn't it?
It is.
Park East.
Yeah.
Park East, the one that's going to run over.
That does run into Park East there, the...
So they get out that exit also.
That's right.
So won't all funnel to the exit onto 26?
Both the exits would have stoplights.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Riley? Any comments from members of the audience on this particular rezone request? Any other final questions or comments by council? We'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Ordinance passes at seven to zero.
Thank you. That concludes the ordinances. We'll move to resolutions, and Resolution 2014-05.
Resolution approving a deduction for tax payment in an economic revitalization area. Subaru of Indiana Automotive Personal Property Tax Pay.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve Resolution 2014-05.
Mr. Downey?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider Resolution 2014-05. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you just briefly tonight. I'll talk about '04 and '05 kind of at the same time here, but certainly available for questions. I was not able to be at the caucus due to being in Washington, DC. Probably would have rather been at the caucus, but that's okay. Just want to say a few words about asking for your support for these two resolutions. As you know, Subaru has been a tremendous partner of this community for many years in many different ways, through their longtime, stable employment of good-paying jobs with benefits for our community, their community involvement in our community, being a tremendous environmental steward with their Zero landfill auto plant, and the list really goes on and on about their commitment to this community in many different ways. This investment here of almost $400 million is really, you know, record-setting for our community. It says tremendous things about how they feel about this community, the long-term stability of that plant, and our relationship, not only here locally, but with our sister city in Japan, Ota City. And I think it's a relationship that has served us all well, and I certainly look forward to doing so for many, many years in the future. So we appreciate your support on this. It's another major step in our overall economic development plan. I know Tom Easterday is here from Subaru to make a few comments about the project itself, but certainly appreciate everyone's support on this, and we are excited to get it underway and what it means for the community now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Easterday?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, Madam Clerk. Let me take you back just very quickly. A couple of years ago, about two years ago, based on Subaru's success in the US automotive market, our parent company Fuji Heavy Industries was looking to add another model to be built here in North America and looking for how and where to build that. At that point in time, Honda and Nissan both chose to build plants in Mexico. So there was a lot of pressure for automakers to do that, primarily because of the less expensive labor rates in Mexico. But with the cooperation of local officials here in Lafayette and in Pecanou County, and also the Indiana Economic Development Corporation and our utility providers, we were able to put together a very competitive package, and based on that, the next generation Subaru Impreza is going to be built here in Lafayette. And the project is basically the same as was announced last May 8. At that time, I indicated the capital investment would be between $400 and $450 million by the end of 2016. We now project that it will be about $422 million, and of that, about $68 million in real property improvement and about $354 million in personal property improvement. At that time, we projected it would create about 900 new jobs by the end of 2016. We still believe that approximately 900 new jobs will be created by the Impreza project, although with the Camry production ending in 2016, the net impact will be the addition of about 50 full-time SIA associates. Now, the primary additions to our plant will be a new paint shop, expansion of the engine assembly area, and we also expect the construction to begin either late this April or early May. The only part of the construction that is not being done due to the Camry leaving 2016 is a little bit of warehouse expansion that we hope to do in the future with future expansions. And I should add too, should Subaru continue to do well in the US market, and I got a couple of numbers here that are pretty amazing, Subaru sales were up 19.3% in January, when the market as a whole was down 3.1%. And I just got this today, Subaru sales in February are up 24% when the market is basically flat compared to last year. So this is the second month in a row, and I believe it's the ninth month out of the last 12 that Subaru has had the largest percentage gain of any automaker in America. So if those numbers continue, we're very hopeful that we'll have other projects beyond the Impreza project in 2016. So thank you very much. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Easterday?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else presenting for the company? Okay. Any other...
I would like to ask Mr. Carson. We had a problem with these graphs, I believe, and I have not received, and I think the clerk said that she mailed those out, but I haven't got them. And are all of these graphs now in agreement with?
Yes, they are.
Length of time?
Yeah, we had an error in the table there, and we corrected that, so what you have should be the corrected form.
Now, is it implied that at the end of 10 years, that those folks will be paying 100% of the tax rate?
Yes. This is a tax paid in over time.
Is it written in here?
Yes. I mean, it's reflected in the table.
Well, the one table stops 10 years and 90%. Now, maybe that was one that was corrected.
Just for the members of the public, what he's talking about is that there were some tables that were provided to us showing how the taxes were going to be phased in under this period.
Yeah, that was the one that was...
Right.
At the end, after the 10th year, there's no... Has 100% of abatement first year, 90%. This was one that was corrected, 90%. 10th year, they're down to only a 10% of abatement.
Yeah. So if this table continued on, year 11 would say zero on that percentage, so there would be 100% of tax phase-in at that point.
And that is stated somewhere in this?
It's state law, yes.
Part of the rules of... Okay, very good. Thank you.
If that's part of the resolution, do we need to amend it?
No, it's already in the...
Of the new... Trading 100% of their value from the first year, 90% at once. You get to the 10th year, there's only a 10% of the tax abatement. This is not... You don't have to... That's... This is the one that Mr. Mr. pointed out at caucus has been corrected.
But my question is, if the old one was filed, do we have to amend this one to include the...
I think...
I think...
Yeah, I think...
Scribner's error, yes.
If you want to make it clear, you can go ahead and move the filed subsequent to the...
I think we should.
I'd make that motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to amend the resolution to accurately reflect the table showing the years and the percentage with year one, 100% of the abatement of the new taxes going down to 10% on year 10. Mr. Clinker?
I will recuse myself from all of this.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Let me at least get somebody to second the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Heidi?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to amend. Mr. Clinker?
I just wanted to let you know I'm going to recuse myself since I am a contractor for SIA on-site.
Understood. All right. So there's a motion now on the table to amend it, to accurately reflect the table as we've been talking about. Any questions among council members on the motion to amend? Any comments from the public on the motion to amend to accurately reflect this table of phase-in? All right.
Can I just do a voice vote on this?
Yeah. I mean, that's... Before we vote?
Yes.
That table is going to be in which one, five or six?
Well, it's in... We're on Resolution 05 right now.
So then we will also have to amend six?
When we get to that one.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Everyone understand the motion to amend? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. It's... The motion's passed to amend it as reflected. All right, now on the regular resolution itself. Any other questions by council? Any questions or comments from members of the public and members of the audience on this abatement request by SIA? All right. Then we'll have a roll call vote on the resolution as amended.
Heidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Amended resolution passes at 6:0 with one abstention.
All right. Thank you. The resolution passed. Now, we're moving on to the next resolution, which again involves the same topic, Resolution 2014-06. Mr. Campbell?
I move for passage of Resolution 2014-06.
Please.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to consider 2014-06. Any other comments by Mr. Easterday or by the mayor? This one is regarding the real estate, is that right? Okay. And so the same issue I think we had is just simply, do we want to make sure it reflects the accurate table? I haven't... Just for the record, to be clear, we want to make sure that the resolution includes the accurate table indicating that the first year percentage of phase-in would be... Or the tax abatement would be 100%, and it goes all the way down to 5% on the 10th year.
On the real estate, 100%. Abatement of the first year, 95, 80. Goes down to the 10th year, there's only...
Is there a motion to amend to that effect, Mr. Brown?
So I move.
Mr. Williamson?
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments on the motion to amend, just to make sure that this accurately reflects the phase-in of the taxes? Any comments from the public on this motion to amend the resolution on the real estate? All in favor of the motion to amend signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment passes. Now, we're to the amended resolution. Any further comments by council? Any further comments by members of the audience on the amended resolution regarding the SIA abatement request for real estate? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Amended resolution passes at 6:0 with one abstention.
Thank you. The resolution's passed. Moving on, reports to standing committees. I do not believe we have any outstanding issues of any standing committees. Reports to special committees. I don't believe that there's any outstanding issues in special committees. A report by the mayor.
...this evening?
Sure.
Want to see some government in action, too. That's why we didn't bump it up to the front. You two, we have to give up.
Who wants to go first? All right.
Didn't tell him that, coach?
Okay. All right. All right. Well, as many of you probably know, we are honored to... Tonight, to honor the 2014 Lafayette Jeff Girls Bowling Team who won the state championship, and we thought that we should do something special for them, to bring them here down to City Hall and to the City Council meeting to honor them. And I had a very special plaque made to honor this event. I can get it out of the plastic there. And I'll hold it up and show it to you guys, and I'll show it to the...
Nicely done.
Very nice. Read, Jefferson High School, presented to the 2014 Lafayette Jeff Girls Bowling State Championship team. Congratulations on a job well done. You are re-commended on your outstanding teamwork, commitment, and effort. So on behalf of myself and the City of Lafayette, congratulations.
He worked here or what? Tough crowd. Does anybody from the team want to say anything? If you want, if anybody wants to say something, you're welcome to. If one of the coaches would like to say anything about the girls real quick, you're welcome to.
I'll say something. First of all, I want to thank Principal Preston for supporting our program. We're kind of out on an island, or we have been the 14 years I've been involved, but he's really got the kids involved with the school this year, and that's much appreciated. And back when I was a kid growing up bowling, there used to be a promotion for bowling that said, "Get the kids off the streets and into the alleys," and I think this shows... This shows what can happen when you do that, so we're a little proud of the girls, and thank you.
Can we get a picture, Mayor? Think we can get a picture with all of them?
Yeah. You want to hang... Can you guys hang around for about five minutes?
Sure.
Finish up the meeting, then we'll move this out of the way, and we'll take...
They're just cutting it short around you.
Sing the fight song, right? Sing the fight song.
Well, congratulations, girls. It's a great honor, and we're really glad that you came here this evening to share in that honor. When I spoke recently to some other students at Jeff, I reminded students at school, you know, you work hard on your team and you represent your school, but when you represent your school, especially outside Lafayette area, you're also representing the city. And by your showing of good sportsmanship and good teamwork, that reflects well upon the city, so we appreciate you representing the city well. Thank you. We'll move on then to the council... Miscellaneous to new business council appointments we have up for reconsideration or for consideration, reappointment. Lafayette Fire Merritt Commission, John Hank, to a four-year term. We have up for reconsideration or for consideration, reappointment Lafayette Fire Merrick Commission John Hank to a four-year term. Is there a motion? Mr. Campbell?
I move that, can we approve both of those at one time? Separately, all right, I would move that John Hank be reappointed to a four-year term.
On the.
On the fire.
And Mr. Klinker?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That appointment is approved. The next one is to the Tippin County Library Board, Brandon Hawkins for a four-year term. Mr. Klinker?
Reappointment by Brandon Hawkins, the library board.
Mr. Reynolds?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to approve, Mr. Hawkins? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. The department head update, typically around this time of the year, we ask department heads to come and give us a brief update about their progress in their departments and what they see as their challenges for the next year or whatever they might need from the council. So at this point for this evening, it was Chief Flanley with Lafayette Police.
Good evening, Mr. President and ladies and gentlemen of the city council. Patrick Flanley, Chief of Police from the Lafayette Police Department. I have my brief report here for this year's activities at the Lafayette Police Department. First and foremost, I want to thank you and the city of Lafayette for the support that, that we receive at the police department. It's been a busy year, and we continue to expect that 2014 will also be a busy year. And April 4th, you should expect that our annual report will be published. And that, that can be found at our website. So really, all the details and the ongoings of the police department can be found in that annual report. Last year's is currently posted there if you would like to view that for future or further details from tonight. Just a couple of the highlights to talk about tonight. We've made some renovations to the police department, thanks to your support. One of them was in our records division, based on report findings internally and externally with the assistance of ITAP and Purdue University. We did a productivity and workflow study of our records division. Based on those findings, we physically changed the structure of our records department, closed down our traffic window, and consolidated some functions. And that's been extremely helpful to us so far, and it's improved some efficiencies. And hopefully, in the long run, will save us some money as well. We're also, it's going to be a busy year for us. Well, also within the police department, we're expanding the, the physical size of the number of lockers that we have in our, in our locker room downstairs for our officers. It's a, it's a much needed expansion. We were out, we really didn't have the capacity when we moved into the police department in 95 when it was, when it was redone. So we've expanded the locker rooms by an additional 47, so we're up to 105 lockers. So almost, most, all of our officers can have a locker now. The administrative service, services division is going to be busy. We're going to be hiring up to nine officers, well, nine officers at least this year with the expansion from the cops grant and retirements and other openings that we have. So we're, we're busy conducting background investigations right now on, on a group of candidates, and we're continuing to look for more. With those in line, or with that effort in mind, we put together, we contracted with Purdue and some folks at Purdue to help us put together recruitment video that also highlights some of the activities of the police department and, and what we do at the Lafayette Police Department. It turned out really well. It's available at Lafayette, at our website, Lafayette.in.gov.us. It's also available on our YouTube page at LafayetteIndianaPolice.com if you want to check that out. Our training center's been extremely busy. Last year, we had 333 hours provided for police agencies, 38 hours provided for other agencies, and, well, community agencies, and then 90 hours for outside police agencies. We're expecting that to increase this year as our training center becomes a little bit more widely known. We continue a big push in social media to try to generate as much interest in the community in what we're doing and participation and cooperation. Nextdoor continues to be a big push for us. www.Nextdoor.com. If you're not on there, if you're a community member, we highly encourage you to get involved in your neighborhoods on Nextdoor because it's a really beneficial program to us, and it helps us to connect with neighborhoods in a way that we can really help reduce not just crime, but quality of life issues as well. Our Nixle continues to be our quickest way to get the word out to the community about emergencies and traffic issues, 888-777-NIXLE. Encourage you to get on there, and you can follow us on Twitter as well. And then lastly, our, our communication center has been extremely busy with the change in the, the public safety answering point switch, where we're now taking all the cellular 911 calls that occur in our area that are coming into our dispatch center. We've essentially doubled, actually 106% increase in the number of calls that have come into our, our dispatch center. So we're expanding our communication center by, by two dispatchers this year, and we're currently in the process of working on that. And so that's, that's been a, a big change for us down there. And then our Part 1 offenses from our crime, we had an increase of 3% in 2013 over 2012, which ultimately equates to about 300 and so reports on violent crimes. Good news is eight of the 12 months, we exhibited less than, than we did in the previous year. The four, and four of the months, we had a slight increase. We had, property crimes continue to be our, our number one crime issue as far as Part 1 crimes go. And we, they accounted for 92% of all of our crimes. And of those, shoplifting is one of our most frequent offenses, and that accounted for 27%. So we're looking into ways right now in how to, how we can cut into some of those. But Nextdoor and some of our social media initiatives are things that we can do to cut into some of those problems and actually help reduce those issues. But that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions?
Just one. What is the presence, presence size of our force?
Well, currently, we're allotted, we're at 134, and we're expanding this year to 138. And then with a couple of retirements that we've had. And I should note, Officer Delane Himes retired after 24 years. Sergeant Max Smith, after 33 years, will be retiring in August. And then we had a transfer to the fire department and another for personal reasons, another retirement. So we're operating right now at 129 officers. So we're, we're running a little bit short, but our officers continue to, to work extremely hard. Calls for service continue to go up every year, and they continue to do a tremendous job serving the community.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief. All right, reports to councilmen. Any councilman have a report? Now, we're at the part of our meeting where we open up to public comment. We invite members of the audience and the community to come forward and address us with anything on their minds. I do remind people that our standard custom is to limit public comment to three minutes. And our trustee city clerk will be here to keep time. With that, I invite anyone to come forward and address the council.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
We're not taking this, but it's part of your three minutes. And please start by stating your name and address.
My name is Bill Miller, and I live in 8143 State Road 25 North. And I am the co-president of the AACC, the Americas Area Community Coalition. This agriculture area around Americas is threatened by a construction of a proposed stone quarry. This is not a gravel pit. This is an industrial mining complex with blasting, crushing stones, heavy-duty trucks, and massive conveyor belts. They propose occasionally operating 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And judging from their operations from the other quarries they have, that will be consist of spring, summer, and fall. They plan on building this into a, in a flood area with a 67-foot to a 72-foot tall dike, which they call overburden. It will be 5,524 feet long. That's over a mile. It will be, the base of it will be 240 feet, I mean, 290 feet to 310 feet. That's the base. It will be approximately 36 to 39 acres that it will take up. And the pit itself is approximately 35 acres, and it will be 420 feet deep. The one in Delphi goes about 180 to 200 feet deep. The pit itself will have a three-foot berm around it with a trench. And then they plan on putting 25 pumps around that trench to pump out any water that may flood into their trench to keep it dry. So that's 70 acres, and when it floods, approximately 70 acres will be removed from the flood plain. And how will that affect Lafayette? According to Professor West at Purdue, the, the water will come through the restricted area and will pick up speed. And when it picks up speed, it will cause erosion. Now, how much erosion it will be, we don't know. But that's one of the concerns we have with it being up there, coming down to Lafayette, is the speed of the river and erosion. Also, Tippin County is proud of its recreation activities. We have Leisure Time Park up there, and we have Prophet's Town. And we have, tourists comes in, they spend the night, they go to the football games. Then they go over and, you know, they eat, they go to the dog and steds and the fruit con locations. Well, the quarry, the noise from the.
Bill Miller, your time is up. Can you just conclude quickly?
Okay, well, there's 230 residents in, within a mile and a quarter. And we're not against a stone quarry, but we're against the location because we need it. And if you need any more information, please give us a, a call. I'll give you our number, and we'd like to have the support. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for bringing this to our attention and your, your presentation. Thank you. Any other comments from members of the audience, members of the public? Seeing none, Mr. Campbell?
I move we adjourn.
Mr. Heidi?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?